Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to share tonight a little bit about our school start time project. I know this topic has sparked a lot of interest and rightfully so. It's been an intense few months as we've worked through many steps of our process. Tonight's the night, though, that I will share with you all and reveal to our school community where we've landed and what can be expected for our new school start times in the 24-25 school year and beyond. So each month this year, I've shared a brief update at board meetings. And Dr. Deagle and I have had the opportunity to provide additional information to you all leading up to tonight. But our agenda for the presentation is to review our project goal and process that we worked through, preview some of the start time parameters, research that we reviewed, and central Ohio comparisons to share about the feedback we gathered in the different phases of our project and then to reveal our new school start time model and our next steps. So as I reviewed feedback and talked with a lot of people along the way, several people asked, "Why now? What has prompted the interest in changing our school start times? What are we working to achieve with this project?" And we have an FAQ that will be going out tomorrow to all district families and staff members. And the opening to that FAQ helps to share that though we're tackling this project now, it's actually something we've talked about in the district for several years. A couple of you have been a part of some of those discussions and conversations in the past. So the research related to school start times consistently shows significant positive impacts for later start times with our high school students. So in an attempt to align with that research and consider ways to support our students better, we felt now was the right time to explore options and make that change. So overall, our project goal was to review our current school start time structures and gather feedback on research and options to guide adjustments for our district. So our process has been very extensive, as I mentioned, for the last four months. It's involved a lot of opportunities for different members of our school community to engage. Each of these stakeholder groups have played critical roles in this project. And their work has kind of ebbed and flowed back and forth throughout the project. So our steering committee met several times. Initially, their work was centered on discussing the project goals, the parameters, and kind of planning how we would engage with our staff and family members. They also spent time developing framework guidelines that we used for the various options. And these included things like, "How early before school starts can buses arrive? And what time do we need kids there at the end or buses there at the end to pick up kids?" So that we don't have supervision issues. Another role of the steering committee was to pour through all of the feedback we received and really quantify common trends that we saw, which I'll highlight a little bit later. Also, members of our team attended our family focus group meetings, helped to review our frameworks, and made suggestions for different options we were considering. In addition, I had many individual and group department meetings with various leaders in the district. I had an opportunity to meet with all of our union presidents. Jerry stepped out. Also had a chance to meet with our middle school and high school athletic directors, Mrs. Schweller from their food service department, our transportation department, our curriculum special education teams. So really wanted to have conversations about how potential changes could impact all of those areas of our school district. And then we had our family focus group. That was a lot of fun. One of our family focus group members is here in the audience tonight. We started out with more than 200 community members that were interested in being a part of this work. We had 50 that joined the first meeting, a little more than 50 that joined the first meeting, and about 30 that were able to come to the second meeting. And we're so appreciative of that group's engagement, their critical feedback, you know, really looking at the research and helping us to kind of follow what's best for kids. They also guided some of our questions and considerations that needed to be monitored throughout the project. And then at our last meeting, we spent time where they went through a noticing and wondering activity to help us really identify some of the challenges and benefits of the different options. And finally, our wonderful staff, that's very large, had a couple of different opportunities to weigh in through surveys. There was a survey at the beginning of the project. We had about 95 staff members complete that, providing general questions and considerations and what they thought our priorities should be in the project. And then again, when we had narrowed down options to five, that went back out. And we had about 273 staff members share their feedback on those options. As with every project, there are parameters that kind of guide the work that we had to be mindful of. So this slide just shows some of these original parameters, taking a look at the state requirements for hours. Of course, making sure that we have our transportation capabilities will work within our new framework, looking at research related to school start times and student well-being, and then considering that feedback from our stakeholders. To talk a little bit more about one of those parameters, the research, I have condensed what was several slides of research on studies related to the impact of good sleep habits for students down into three slides. So this slide just kind of highlights some of the organizations that we reviewed research from. As you know, we have many highly qualified experts in our district. And one of our family focus group members is actually an assistant professor with the Department of Neuroscience at OSU, researching how sleep is regulated and such, as she was a great resource for some of the data that we reviewed. I, as well as others, learned a lot in this process. I shared some of this information in a video that was released several weeks back. We hear a lot about the recommendations for all individuals and how much sleep we should get. But this shows the breakdown for children, saying that students ages six through 12 should receive nine to 12 hours of sleep, and students ages 13 to 18 should get eight to 10 hours of sleep. So what I had no idea about was how circadian rhythms change for kids. And this has actually helped me in my parenting. So as adolescents are going through puberty, their circadian rhythms and natural sleep patterns adjust, making it harder for them to fall asleep. And so melatonin's not actually released until about 11:00 PM, making it harder for kids even when they're trying to go to sleep to actually fall asleep. Dr. Deagle and I did a little bit of action research with her superintendent's advisory council. And when we surveyed all of the students from the high school, there was only one student that shared she consistently gets the recommended hours of sleep each night. So honestly, we weren't super shocked, but definitely, you know, supports the work and the research we were looking at here. So in all of the research we looked at, there was positive data showing that pushing school start times back to 8:30 or later for high school students helps to improve academic performance, reduce dropout rates. It produces fewer tardies, improved attendance, less sleeping in class, fewer reported symptoms of depression, a decrease in crash rates with our teen drivers, as well as less sleeping in class and fewer disciplinary incidents. So a ton of positive research related to having school start times be later for our high school students. Additionally, students that get nine hours of sleep are three times less likely to make a suicide attempt. And we know we've talked a lot about that data in our district and the mental health needs of our students. So anything we can do to promote better sleep habits is helpful. Also had some feedback along the way that says, "Yeah, absolutely, we understand and we support this research related to high school students, but what about our youngest learners? What does research say about younger kids having earlier start times?" And so in looking at some of that research, really earlier start times had a net zero effect on our youngest learners. And then another study actually showed that it yielded modestly higher scores in math for some of our disadvantaged students. So definitely supports the start time placement that's a little bit earlier for younger students. Implementing school start time laws is a growing trend across the United States. California was the first state to mandate later school start times in 2002. And then Florida recently enacted similar law. There are nine states currently working considering start time legislation. And what was interesting for me to learn, because I didn't know this before, but back in 2019, before COVID, there was actually a Cleveland senator in Ohio that introduced Senate Bill 218 that would have included some restrictions on school start times in Ohio. That didn't come to fruition, but I do believe that as more districts talk about the research and start to kind of make these changes on their own, that I wonder if we might see that type of legislation again in Ohio. These next couple of slides just highlight some central Ohio comparison data that we looked at. If you take a look at the elementary, middle, and high school columns, it kind of shows our comparative length of day to other central Ohio school districts. And so if you look in the elementary column, we are currently at 6:25. And this is on the lower side for elementaries in the area. So one of the things we were looking to do was add some instructional time to the elementary day. Middle school time falls kind of right in the middle of the pack, so weren't looking to make too many changes there. And with high school, we actually have the longest day tied with one other district. And so we have some constraints that that causes. And so I'll talk about that a little bit later, but we were looking to maybe decrease our high school time as we were working through this process. This slide shows the actual start and end times of those same comparative central Ohio districts. What's interesting is that in the elementary column, you'll notice there are quite a few districts that start elementary later in the 8:50 slot, the 9 o'clock slot, and even later. Middle school is a good range. High school pretty typically is in that earlier slot like we have. But we have Bexley, Reynoldsburg, and Worthington all have made some shifts with their high schools to align with the brain research. So we will be the next in line for that. Okay, so these next couple of slides will share feedback trends we collected early in the process that showed what family members and staff members felt really needed to be monitored in the process. I also have a slide that talks a little bit about how students felt about the possibility of making some changes. So as I mentioned earlier, our steering committee was tasked with reviewing every narrative comment and tallying those trends. And this slide shows some of those. So there was a desire for us to be paying attention to sleep schedules, the impact that the school start times have on evening activities, factors related to childcare, making sure that we don't lose opportunities for enrichment for our middle school students that currently go to the high school or our Chinese enrichment programs, which we will maintain moving forward. Looking at the length of our instructional days, making sure we're considering the impact on all levels, and taking a look at planning time and contract times for our staff, also traffic patterns, and then very important component is our logistics of transportation. So this slide, I'm actually going to read these out loud. So these were quotes from our students as we talked about the chance of changing our school start time. So first one said, "It will be beneficial for students because they will get more sleep." Another said, "Right now, on test days where we get to come in later, I'm more awake and engaged. It will produce better productivity. Students will have more energy throughout the day. Even if the day is a little shorter, the learning time will be more quality because kids are rested." Another said, "I feel like the school culture could change if everyone isn't so dreadful and tired." So one student referenced, "I have a class at Clark this year. On days I come in late, I not only feel better because I have more time to get ready, eat breakfast, and get organized, but I come more prepared and I'm not dreading going to class." And then the last one's probably my favorite. "If I was a freshman, this would be the best day of my life. It's too bad it's happening now that I'm leaving." So obviously, that came from a senior. So in looking at our start and end time options, this slide actually shows our current model, which everyone should be very familiar with. One of the things that you'll notice off to the side is our max bus count. So currently, we operate 67 buses in the morning, 64 in the afternoon. And that's something we tried to be very mindful of. We've been careful in working with our routing specialists to look for efficiencies that could be implemented and make sure we're staying out or below that 67 mark within our transportation department to help with those driver shortages and, you know, the sub needs that Jerry talks about each month when he's here. Now altogether, we generated 13 different options that we looked at, but we were able to narrow it down to five initially to put before staff and family focus groups for feedback. So this slide shows those five options, and I'll explain each of them a little bit. And that first column, it's just our current. All of these options, our preschool start times are either stay where they are or they shift 15 minutes. There's one model where it had them shifting back 30 minutes. Option one, switch the place of high school and elementary in our order of school start times. It added extra time to our elementary day, which we were wanting to get in there. And it took time away from the high school day, but it has a start time at 8:20. And so that was a little bit earlier than what the research suggests. It doesn't quite get us to that targeted time. Middle school here is close to current times with only a five-minute shift. Option two, so there was some feedback early on suggesting that maybe we needed an option where elementary was later, kind of like some of the central Ohio districts we looked at. So this one is an option that has a pretty big change for elementary, moving them to that last slot in the day and then moving middle schoolers up to that 8:00 AM slot. Option three and four are very similar. We have the added time for the elementaries going at the beginning of the day here. And they both move middle school into that middle slot with high school being last with a five-minute difference in that end time. And then finally, option five uses the order from option one, elementary, high school, middle school, shifts the additional time, though, closer to our current time. So it was a little bit of time before, a little bit of time after, which then bumped middle school back more as well. So as you'd imagine, there are pros and cons to each of the models. And depending on each staff member and each family structure, the benefits for some could have been seen as negatives for others. As we poured through the feedback, Megan Bradford, our secretary at Central Office, she actually helped me to quantify some of the frequency of some of the feedback comments we were getting. And as we were talking about it, you know, there would be times when we noticed maybe a preschool teacher would say something positive about one option, and then another preschool teacher would say something negative about that same option. Or, you know, a middle school teacher might say something that's favorable about an option, but a high school teacher would say that that really gave them pause. So I think it just really goes to show that everyone's perspective brings something different to the table. And in a minute, I'll talk about really those decision factors that we use to make the choice. But this slide shows some of those trends. So in all of the models, the goal of pushing the high school start time back was able to be accomplished. But as I suggested, option one doesn't quite meet the research. Option one also had favorable release times for middle school and high school for after-school activities. Options two, three, and four have the earlier middle school times, which actually creates a gap between when middle school kids would get out and when their after-school activities would occur. And so that, you know, kind of crept in as a supervision concern. Option five was closer to our current elementary and middle school times than some of the other options. Other feedback was that option two created a more drastic change and that that could really cause families to maybe need childcare at the beginning of their day. And it also had some pretty significant changes for middle school students with regard to their pickup. Then in option one, three, and four, and actually even with option five, the added time in the day and where it was, we really received some feedback about how that could create very early bus pickup times for our youngest kids. So we processed things like, "Wow, these times could cause early pickup times. We need to be mindful of putting our youngest kids out at their bus stops in the dark." And so that really prompted us to decide, "Okay, let's try one more option. Let's see if we can finagle things to mix and get the best solution for all." So we actually have option six. So option six on this slide bumps our elementary day back five minutes from its current time, shifts that added elementary time to the end, which really helps us with that bus pickup time for our youngest learners. It shifts the high school start time back to 8:35, but maintains that 3:20 dismissal, which plays nicer with after-school athletics. And it does move middle school's start time back 20 minutes from the current start time. So I'm going to pause. A lot of information. And we're finally here to the point where I'm going to reveal our new school start time. But before I do click the slides, I just want to say that we know changing routines and structures that have been in place for years can be really challenging and that this decision will likely result in some people being super pleased and other people feeling a little upset. But we really feel like we have analyzed these options and picked the option that causes the least disruption to the overall district and also accomplishes our desire to move our high school start time back to align with that research on the mental and physical health of our teens. So this slide talks about the decision factors I mentioned earlier, impacting our families and staff as little as possible. And this is in regards to start and dismissal times, contract hours, daycare needs, evening events, morning routines. There's a lot that goes into this. Moving the high school start time back to align with research and recommendations, increasing the elementary day to align with other local districts without making pickup times too early, decreasing the length of a high school day to align with other local districts, and increase that professional collaboration and support with students and ensure that our current bus fleet can manage the new routes, which is critical. Where possible, we were looking to maintain our average ride times or improve those slightly if we could, and then looking to minimize shuttles as much as possible, which we're really pleased that this model helps us to do, which really just gains learning time back in the day for our students. So here you have it, our new school start times for the 24-25 school year and beyond. We will be moving forward with option six that was developed late in the game. Our pre-K sessions will be 8:30 to 11:15 and 12:15 to 3:00. Elementary will run from 8:05 to 2:45. High school will operate 8:35 to 3:20, and our middle school will run 9:05 to 3:50. This slide has some important comparisons between our current start time and the new model we will be implementing. At the top of the chart, you see those change comparisons. In all of our models, when I was talking about reducing the high school day, we were looking at options that reduced the day from seven hours, 15 minutes, down to six hours, 55 minutes, six hours, 50 minutes, or six hours, 45 minutes. So those were kind of the options throughout. This one does drop us to six hours, 45 minutes, but still keeps us in line with other districts in central Ohio. And a benefit of this reduction allows us to have our contracted staff available for before and after-school supervision, which we don't currently have. Also, it supports better access to staff in the mornings and afternoon that currently, they really come in seven to eight minutes before the kids and leave seven to eight minutes after the kids. So that is a really, really tight day. With this model, elementary does have the increase to the school day. Middle school and preschool stay the same. If you move down, we look at the bus comparisons. Currently, as I said, we run 67 buses in the morning. This model drops us to 57. Jerry and I talked about this a little bit at the beginning and kind of what that will look like moving forward. Maintains the same in the afternoon with 64 buses. Our average ride time does improve slightly from 24 minutes to 22 minutes in this model. And then lastly, you'll see there's a slight increase in the walk, average walk to stop, two hundredths of a mile. Now, this will certainly impact students differently, for sure. One of the things that we have worked on in this modeling is to create efficiencies. And you heard how Dr. Deagle loves efficiencies earlier. So over the years, we've gotten to the point where we've had multiple stops within a stretch of several houses, or maybe Cara's kids get picked up at the end of her driveway and Burl's kids get picked up at the end of their driveway, not specifically them. I'm just using examples. But this model and the efficiencies we've created will really have us utilizing corner stops more consistently across the district. And so that's a positive efficiency for us. The next section actually takes a look at what our earliest pickup and latest drop-off times will be. We see improvements in a lot of areas, specifically wanting to highlight our elementary pickup time. So nobody in the district will be picked up before 7:00 AM, which was something we were really shooting for with that last option. Middle school times look a lot better with the first pickup being about 40 minutes before the start of school as opposed to a longer gap. I also want to point out that in this selected model, we have zero of our youngest learners that will be on the bus for 45 minutes or longer, and that is really huge. It's really tough for those little squirrely kids to sit there as long as they sometimes have to currently. So we're very pleased about that. Two other benefits that I'll mention quickly are that the release time, as I said, gets us out in a way that's better suited for our after-school activities and our older students' practice, and school practices and responsibilities. And then also, this was also a big discussion point for us, that this particular model, using the average ride time, gives us a shorter length of time between when our youngest students get home and when their older siblings get home. And so that was something that was really important to us. You know, it's a shorter time than some of the other options. So I've shared a lot of information tonight. And there's definitely a lot for staff and families and students to process. I'll highlight our next steps. We will begin the transition process and, you know, kind of shifting things in our routing software. Mr. Hetzel and his team will be sending out a transportation intent survey this spring just to help us with kind of shoring up who will actually be utilizing transportation to the best of families' abilities for predicting. Currently, we have to route everyone eligible for a bus. And then at certain levels, especially as you get up, less and less kids actually use the bus. So it'll help us to be a little more definitive in our routing. And then be preparing bus route and bus stop notifications for families, which will come out in the summertime typically. We'll continue planning necessary updates for course offerings and extracurricular activities. I had a follow-up meeting with Athletic Director Harris. And for most of our sports teams, we're sitting in a pretty good spot with just making some minor adjustments or still being able to make a four o'clock bowling match and things like that. Hockey, we already are in the works of, you know, hockey is the one sport that we might have to adjust some times and work with the ice rinks. And so that's already in the process also. We'll continue working on logistical updates, including contract and planning times, when, you know, breakfast, lunch, and recess times will happen. And then make sure we circle back with our local daycares about communicating our updates. Before moving to questions, I want to thank everyone that participated in this process and supported the work along the way. That includes our union presidents, who truly were just amazing, and time and time again said, "We support whatever is best for kids." Our focus group members, our students, our staff for the feedback, our amazing transportation department, who spent hours providing data and working with our routing experts and specialists to kind of navigate the options. Lastly, I'd also like to thank Judy and Eric for their support with all of the communication pieces, Dr. Deagle and Mr. Hetzel for being great thought partners and for supporting this work. We truly feel like it will have a positive impact on our kids. Questions?
Did you want to say something? Okay. I just, I have no questions. I think that you answered every question that couldn't have possibly been in any of our heads.
That was intentional.
Just want to say thank you. I know particularly Daphne and I, as you mentioned, we've been in this conversation with you all for about eight years. Six years, however long we've been talking about this. And just really appreciate the depth of conversations, the depth of work that you did to look at the research, the depth and breadth that you sought out for feedback and participation in navigating through the project. It is in a district of this size and a district where, you know, you mentioned Bexley, for example. They don't bus their students. We bus our students and the logistics of using those same buses to bus at each of the different levels, in addition to all of the extracurricular activities. It's just very complicated from a logistics perspective. So it was, it is not unnoticed by us how much you took on in really digging into the project. And just appreciate all of the different avenues that you pursued in, like I said, getting feedback, but also thinking about things like daycares and just the contract with the hockey rink and all of those additional places where a change like this will impact. So thank you for all of that time and effort and care with it. Did you want to say something, Mrs. Coates?
I mean, ditto everything Mrs. Pickle Antonio said. My only add is also just building on that to say, you saw five options. They weren't quite right, and then you pivoted and went to like, "Okay, we need to look at another." And so after all that work, after... And so after all that work, after all those options to do that, I'm really impressed with that amount of detail and that being able to do that pivot and get to the better place. So thank you. Thank you to you and everybody that worked on it.
Yeah, I think we all share Mrs. Piccolantonio's initial comments. But one thing that I didn't see that I think will be just as exciting that the high school teachers have to be pretty darned excited about the later start time, too. So they're clapping in the back. So I just think that the project was well-executed and it is healthy, it's a healthy and educationally oriented process that will reap benefits for our students.
Thank you.
So I know you kind of gave this in next steps, but communication will be going to... So communication has already gone to staff.
Yes, communication went to staff a little bit before the board meeting. And tomorrow, in the district newsletter, we'll be sending out information related to this whole presentation and an FAQ that they can access on our website that's translatable. And then we'll just continue having conversations as questions come up along the way.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Elliott.